I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with evergreen justice for all.
All right, roll call of the board members, please.
Fudge?
Here.
Agustinelli?
Here.
Klein?
Here.
Robertson?
Here.
Uli?
Here.
Racine?
Here.
DeGud? Here.
All right, and we have our first period of public comment, and there's another period for public comment at the end of the meeting, but if you'd like to, or one public, if you'd like to step to the podium and make a comment, feel free. All right. Being that there will be no public comment, we will move on to review and approval of the agenda and any statements of conflict of interest. And I will begin by saying Beckett and Rader, coworkers of mine, prepared substantial amount of the East Bay Beach District Community Engagement and Corridor Plan, and out of respect for that, I will just be stepping aside if the Planning Commission chooses to discuss it.
You know you get the option. The board can tell you you have to stay.
Oh, you can? Well, that's fine. I don't know. Anybody else with any thoughts on the agenda or anything else?
I'll make a motion. We approve the agenda as printed. Support.
We have a motion by Racine and support by Robertson to approve the agenda. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same. All right, we pass the agenda. Let's move on to the April 19th, 2025 minutes.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
Report.
Motion by Fudge, support by Agustinelli. Any further discussion?
I think you've mentioned April 19th. It's April 9th.
Did I say April 19th?
I thought I heard that.
No, they're April 9th, definitely. Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Same. Motion passes. All right. Any correspondence?
There is none.
No correspondence. All right, let's move on to reports from Township Board.
Yep, just a couple of little things. That prosperity plan that I talked about a couple of weeks ago, they're doing a little rewrite on that. It seems a lot of the township supervisors needed to have more input, so they're doing that. Also, I want to mention we, Garfield Township, will have a new website coming up, and I believe it goes live in the next week or so.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. And it's beautiful. We got a preview of it, lots of color, lots of new pictures, and very nice.
Same address, just a new look.
It's going to have a new address.
It's got some good features in it, though. You'll be able to search, so there's a search bar there, so you put in pole buildings in Garfield Township, and it will pull up ordinances on it, any place that that word is mentioned.
Great.
So it's, the address is garfieldmi.gov. So currently it's garfield-twp.com. So we are now, like a lot of other municipalities, have gone to .gov, which is hosted through the Department of Homeland Security, so it creates a more secure site. It's also going to be ADA compliant, which is something that we've worked hard to make sure that it meets those requirements, which will be, I guess from my understanding, may be mandated here within the next year or so. But garfieldmi.gov is the, if you go to the old one, you will, when it goes live, you'll be rerouted to the new URL regardless, so.
Great.
Directly send you to the new.
Yeah. Our email addresses will also have that new, you know, garfield@mi, or at garfieldmi.gov. But the old ones will still work. It's actually, they are already live right now on our email address, is the garfieldmi.gov address.
Anything from the Zoning Board of Appeals?
We had no meeting.
All right. We've had no meeting with Parks and Recreation Commission, but I can say we're going to have a special meeting added to our schedule for the first Monday in May to review the plans for the Commons Trail.
Yep, I'm checking in with Gordy Fraser tomorrow on the progress for that.
Great.
We're looking forward to that.
Joint Planning Commission?
We did actually have a meeting last week. It was very short and sweet. No official action was taken, but we got an update on the water pressure situation at the barns, and it looks like that's coming along fine, and the solution is pretty much there or just about there. And we were given an update on the progress that's happening with the trails activity going on over there. And it was brought to our attention that our Commons Master Plan is 15 years old, and like other master plans, you're supposed to look at those things every five years, at least. So that'll be on our regular agenda, I think, for the foreseeable future as we take a peek at that. I don't think anybody has called to anybody's attention anything that's out of whack with that plan, but it may need to be adjusted. We don't know. We'll just see what happens as we get into it.
Great.
That's it.
All right. What do you got for staff report?
Just want to report, we are organizing a meeting regarding the Logan's Landing area. It's, with some of the agencies that are, have interest in that area, such as the Grand Traverse County Road Commission, Grand Traverse County Government, TART Trails, and so forth. Just basically trying to get a handle on that area. We know that the road commission is interested ultimately in doing some work there in terms of, at some point, building a bridge to replace the culverts that are there, and we've had some interest in redevelopment of Logan's Landing, so we just wanted to coordinate things, you know, knowing that that's an important part of not just an east-west connection, but also north-south when we look at our trails and parks and so forth. So we're going to be scheduling that sometime here in the few coming weeks, just as a way, just to, like I said, share what people are working on, or what their hopes and goals are for that particular area, so that we're just coordinated. Particularly if we see any redevelopment in that area, we want to make sure it conforms to what the expectations are for that Logan's Landing area.
I don't have anything to add, anything else?
I didn't really have anything else.
That's it. All right. Well, I guess we'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six, Unfinished Business. ED 2025-31, Proposed zoning ordinance amendments on substantial construction definition and lighting. Discussion.
So the discussion on substantial construction definition has happened a few times. Our most recent conversation was back in January of this year. So I've taken those comments and provided the updated definition of what substantial construction is, and then also made some edits to where it applies in some of our areas where it's identified, particularly when in the period of effect for special use permits, also for expiration of approval for special use permits, and then also expiration of approval for site plans and plan developments. So the definition, as the latest version that we have, is substantial construction means the site work must progress beyond grading and completion of structural foundations, and construction must be occurring above grade. How it's applied in some of those other areas, it's basically just altering where it says substantial construction has not commenced, it says has not occurred is the preferred language there. Also, and that applies for special use permits, site plans, and plan developments. One thing we did is also, we changed extensions for site plans. Right now, it's a, a site plan expires in 12 months, and we thought that it would be the kind of, the way it was written in terms of out of an extension, we thought it'd be more appropriate that it really be, if someone did seek an extension of a site plan, that it come to the Planning Commission for that determination. Right now, it's, it's based on the approval authority, which could be an administrative authority. We do a lot of site plans in-house. We thought really if somebody was seeking an extension, it might be more appropriate to go to those provisions that are in the ordinance, that would give some standards as to why they would be seeking an extension. It also limits the extension for another year. Otherwise, the way it's written right now, it could, it could keep going on and on. So it kind of puts us out of the hands of staff, particularly on those administrative reviews, and puts it at the Planning Commission level, which I think would be a better course of action. So that's, that's a significant change there. The rest of those items in terms of plan developments and SUPs, there's really no change there.
Any thoughts or additional changes? John?
I don't have any concerns with the draft language about substantial construction. In fact, I think it looks pretty good. But unless I'm mistaken, at the, on the last line on the first page of the report, paragraph three says approval has not been revoked in accordance with 424-M, and that's exactly what it says in the ordinance, but I think the word "not" shouldn't be there.
Negative.
Yes. So maybe we can make a note.
Yep, we can have that in.
Next time we're doing something to amend our zoning ordinance, I think we need to amend that section and remove that word.
We can do that. If you want to make these changes right now to 424-K two, we can also, if we're adjusting one and two, we can easily just make that adjustment right there. And this is, for this process here, this is if this, if the Planning Commission is okay with this language, we would come back at your next, your next meeting and do an introduction and go through that process of, so this is not necessarily the formal introduction at this point, so any changes or whatever can be made at this time.
Yeah, I'll comment.
Molly?
I think that this covers the recent problems that we've had, you know, with some of the different projects that have gone on. I know that we had talked about walls up, and this doesn't, this just says it has to be above grade. I don't know how far we want to go on that. Maybe that's enough. You know, you want to put in the infrastructure, so sewer and water and all those things. You want to get the footings in, you want to get the floorboard and go up. What does that mean?
Well, you know, I think there's, in terms of construction, you know, once the, there's a lot of situations where you might just have foundations installed, and that stops, stops. But at any point when they are start going kind of vertical like that, it's, it's kind of hard to measure at what point. So that's why it's kind of worded that way, but I think usually if they're starting to, you know, put up walls and so forth, that usually that's an indicator that, you know, it is, they're now going to that next phase. It just seems like that foundation sometimes can be a pivotal point where they might put those in, but stop and not go to that next step. So I think anything above that would indicate that they are now moving into that next phase.
Yeah, good.
So I, I think we're pretty comfortable with that, at least from a staff standpoint.
John?
I think addressing that concern too, Molly, I, I like the fact that it talks about construction must be occurring, as opposed to has occurred. So if somebody did something, and then they walked away, and 11 months later, it's coming up to be determined whether or not substantial construction has been complied with. I don't think it would meet that definition of must be occurring if nothing's happened. But if it's currently happening, then that's what we're looking for.
Fine with it.
I thought long and hard about it. I mean, I still think there's going to be cases where you've got someone who, for whatever reason, recession, whatever, but there's similar language in other communities, and they know coming in that in order to be vested, they've got to check these boxes. And so if vesting means that they've got a 500-unit residential subdivision, and our ordinance says you put up one wall and you're vested, that's what it says. So I'm, I'm okay with it. Are you guys looking for, you haven't really formulated this in a motion, you're looking to verify that we're all good with it, and we're not going to make one more set of changes after you've prepared something for a motion.
Yeah, this, this is just for discussion, so we'll, we'll come back with an actual introduction of language and put it in the format that we typically go, start through that process. So there's really no, you don't need to make any motions or anything to that effect.
And procedurally, then, you'll introduce it, we'll have a public hearing at a following meeting, and then the next meeting after that, we will make a recommendation to the Board of Trustees.
Correct.
Okay.
And they'll be required to also do a subsequent public hearing, and then ultimately adoption.
Great. Do you want to talk about the lighting?
Yeah, so this is something that we talked previously as well, but we just kind of talked about it and didn't really actually draft some language, so this is your first time seeing some draft language. So I highlighted those areas in yellow, which are kind of changes. One of the things, if we start there on Section 517, under the applicability, we also included in, it talks about outdoor artificial illuminating devices, and this also references, because there is one portion of this section of the ordinance which talks about indoor artificial illuminating devices that actually protrude into the outdoor areas. So we did want to expand that a little bit. The exceptions, we've just clarified the language there. On the neon lighting, we, it's intended to be as part of a, of a sign, that's how it's been in the ordinance. It just says neon lighting. We wanted to make sure it wasn't, it was, had some purpose, and it wasn't just decorative. We don't really see a lot of neon lighting, but it would allow for any existing situations. Also, we just clarified where it does talk about luminaires for the flags. We decided to broaden that a little bit more for state and federal laws, so there may be other instances that are, that kind of supersede this ordinance here, so we just wanted to identify those, and that's where it says lighting required by state law, state or federal laws, such as displaying the United States' flag and meeting state building code Moving on, we thought it would be very helpful, there's the part where we talk about shielding and filtration in that part of the ordinance. We thought we'd just add the diagram here, so people can really understand what it, what that language means in terms of a full cutoff fixture, and as well as the light and how it's supposed to be, not supposed to be going above the fixture itself, and also the intensity is adjusted as it goes upwards to that kind of line that comes across the bottom. So this is just an illustration of the language that's in paragraph B2 on the previous page. Going through the next part, we really didn't change anything. Did not want to get into any parts of the foot candles. Those are fairly standard, those were already devised, we didn't, we're not equipped to determine those. So we wanted to keep all those technical items that were already identified in terms of measurements and so forth, to leave those as is. We haven't, there hasn't been any issue, and if we were to adjust those, we want to have somebody else with some expertise to address that. Color, temperature, the same thing, that's, that's worked out well. There's, next part we get into under Part E is prohibition, so things that are not permitted in terms of lighting. And one of the areas we wanted to address was in recreational facilities, and this is an area, one that we've kind of had to deal with is Hickory Hills, because they do have lighting out there for the snow skiing that they have out at Hickory Hills. And also, it goes beyond, sometimes it's later at night, because sometimes they're making snow and so forth. That is under a special use permit, so we thought if there were any restrictions to the lighting out there, the appropriate place would be through the special use permit, which would have to be approved by the Planning Commission. So it doesn't bind it to necessarily a specific time, but it would be something that would be under the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission, and it determined when that would Moving down, we have accent lighting. This gets into an area where we're talking about some of those accent lights that we have along buildings. Most recently, some of the ones that have gone in are like the Seven Brew, has the blue trim lights that have gone in. There's been some concern about the intensity of those, and this basically prohibits those in terms of how those are provided to on the building. So it's, it's a, it's a pretty strong language here. The Planning Commission does have some flexibility to prove may internally illuminated architectural bands or similar shield lighting accents as part of a site plan. So this is a situation where they're not necessarily open lights, because really, the lights that are where they're just stripping around the building are really not following our shielding requirements that are earlier in the section. This does allow for some accent lighting, but it's kind of, trying to think of where's a good example, is there's some that have buildings that, it's not an exposed bulb, it's usually behind some type of plastic or glass that essentially creates an accent lighting, but it's essentially shield, it's not exposed.
So to use the coffee shop as an example, perhaps they could have their LED light, but they would have to have some kind of molding over it, so it creates a glow below, but not a direct projection of the light, right?
Correct. Yeah. So it does allow for some, it's just can't, I mean, because technically, when we look at that type of lighting, Part B is, it kind of just violates it, because it's just a, it's an open bulb. Now, there, there are other instances where we've seen some of that lighting around the township, and I think sometimes it's not necessarily, you know, disruptive in all cases. Sometimes it depends on the color of the light, the color temperature, it also can be the overall intensity of the light. So this is something that would, would definitely change how we would see some of those plans come forward. So this is one I think you want to, you might want to give some thought to before we move on that. The one right below it is, this is, actually found this in quite a few ordinances in some form or another, this is where interior lighting is admitting to the outdoors. This would be in a situation where we've had complaints, like where the U-Haul building went in on the top of McCray Hill on US 31, where it was glaring light to the outside. So it's basically trying, it's basically saying that you can't have that where it extends to the, beyond, into the public right-of-way or to the adjacent property. So there can be some amount of that lighting, it's to, it's to stop the glare that goes beyond the site. And so that's, that's where we're talking about something that actually, why we're typically dealing with outdoor lighting. This is actually dealing with indoor lighting that actually goes to the outside, so where they have a hallway, and they have glass and so forth, and that light is exposed, and it's, it's at a high intensity where it's going out into beyond the property itself. We looked at pole heights, I know we discussed that briefly, and after looking at some of the situations around the township, we thought that the existing language would be appropriate. We also, typically when we go through, and I believe it's in Article 9, it says that we can require a lighting plan as part of a site plan, but we thought it would be helpful to have some description of what a lighting plan is. We could get into a lot of detail, but generally, we just identified roughly what a lighting plan is that we typically see. And these have become, through technology now being applied, these are pretty easy to do. These are pretty easy for, for any type of site plan, for a lighting engineer to identify where the different fixtures are, the height of them, to do all the calculations, to show us where the foot candles is, are located on that site. So this is something that's, that's pretty simple, but we just thought it would be important to kind of describe that there would be a layout showing the location of all existing and proposed lighting fixtures, also to say that we need specifications. This is usually when we get those cut sheets that will show a little description of the type of fixture that they're having there. This can also help us define, making sure that it meets the color, temperature, and so forth, as well as other information that we may want to have on that plan. So this is just a kind of a quick summary of what's involved in that. The last part's not highlighted necessarily, but one thing we thought about doing is, again, providing some visuals. This is, we would have to reference the source of this, but this might be a good, you know, illustration. It's not, it's not endorsing certain lights, but it's showing how lights, you know, ones that are not acceptable, that would produce glare or light trespass in violation of the ordinance, and then making adjustments or other types of light fixtures that would be meeting that, kind of that full cutoff fixture, and less likely to create the glare that we're trying to avoid. So this is just, sometimes images are really helpful, just to illustrate. It's, again, it's not a, these are just examples, so it wouldn't be necessarily something binding to anybody that, you know, it's not to say you got to do what these types, there are other, there may be other types of fixtures out there.
Thoughts or input? John?
Just a couple. I like most of this. On the very first line of Section 517, the purpose section, which didn't show any changes, first line talks about intended to control the use of outdoor artificial illuminating devices, and since we're adding the interior in section, your new section nine, we probably ought to take out the outdoor in that first line. And on the last page of your photometric plan, I wasn't sure what was meant by the last phrase of that highlighted section, including spillover illumination from neighboring properties.
I actually had the same, was going to ask the same question.
There could be, this is in this instance where there may, maybe this is, wouldn't be something that we could necessarily, I mean, I don't know if we could require, it's basically where there's a light source that's impacting the property that's not on the property. It could be an adjacent lighting. And we have, I have seen a couple lighting plans like that, but not typical. Usually it's with the new installation of the fixtures.
I guess my first thought was, if, if somebody is proposing to do something on their own property, they may not have the ability to get information about what is the illumination source on somebody else's property, and that was my, one of my concerns, I guess, is maybe we're asking somebody to do something that we maybe aren't going to be able to have them do.
I would add to that, that when they're doing these light models, then they would have to approximate an older light source from, whether it's LED or halogen, they would, they would be approximating it. And then if they're modeling it, and it's light that's, so I'm, I'm trying to hit a certain light level on my new project at my property line, but now the township is saying you have to model the neighbor's light, and with my light alone, I meet the ordinance, but because my neighbor's light trespasses onto my property in violation of the ordinance, it would be nice to know that, if anybody comes out and complains later and says my light's too high, my lumens are too high. But at the same time, would that mean that I would have to turn my lights down to account for my neighbor's illegal trespass? for my neighbor's illegal trespass? I don't know. That, I mean, I kept playing it out in my head, as you did, John.
We could eliminate that. We'd probably need to adjust that whole sentence there because it basically is account for all light sources that impact the subject site. So we would, we would have to say that are, for all light sources that are planned for the subject site or something to that effect, because it's part of a lighting plan. So we would probably, we would not account for existing situations. Now, we, what we typically have done is, we do have redevelopment sites where people are, let's say, putting in addition to the building, and they may not adjust their outdoor lighting, or maybe they only adjust a couple of fixtures. So they may have some non-conforming situations or existing lights, let's just say, not necessarily non-conforming, some existing lights. And we typically don't require them to do that, only if they are going to upgrade those. Then we have to have some verification of what is it that they're going to put in place and making sure that it meets the requirements for Section 517.
Another scenario, I thought it might come into play somewhere like Cherryland Center, where you have kind of odd parcel boundaries within that site, and you have kind of a shared parking lots. You might have shared parking lot lighting or shared something like that, although that's also probably why we, another thing that behooves the comprehensive site plan for the whole thing, was there should be one photometric plan and lighting plan for that whole site. But there could be some instances I could see where there's shared lighting or if it's part of like shared parking. We can tweak that language, see what makes sense to not overly burden someone.
Anyone else? The figure's nice because it, in looking at it, my thoughts go to a friend of mine who bought a wall pack at, let's say Costco or Home Depot, and it looks more like something on the left, unacceptable discouraged side than something on the acceptable side. Makes me question what my friend was thinking when he put this on his house. But those figures are, yeah, I think those figures are good to help people identify what's approved and acceptable and what's not.
Yeah, the wall packs are the tricky ones. Those are usually the ones that kind of go outwards and ultimately upwards.
And it's really only if it's a trespass issue as opposed to, like for a residential home. Because I'm sure that there are a great many of our residents who probably have a cheap wall pack from, you know, Home Depot on the side of their house to light their garage doors. Again, we're not naming names of the friend.
We do have any exceptions, that's already, language that's in there is low intensity residential decorative lighting is one of the things that's accepted from this.
Any other thoughts? Are we ready to have the guys put this together with the other, the other ordinance revisions and bring us something at our next meeting? I guess it would be at our next, it would be in the end of May, right?
In sort of May study session, yeah.
Okay.
Fine with me.
All right. Well, that's all for unfinished business. And from there, we move on to new business, and we start with PD 2025-32, East Bay Township Beach District Plan Review. And as I said, I will recuse myself from that because Second Raider prepared that, these documents for East Bay Township. Do you guys want me to step down, or am I okay to just sit here quietly?
You know, you might be helpful in some of the discussion, and we're not really voting on whether they're going to do it or not do it.
I really don't know anything about it, in fact.
People want, maybe you don't feel like he's, maybe you feel like he's going to be too...
Molly, I actually had no, I had no engagement in the preparation of the documents. They were just prepared by my coworkers in my company.
My understanding is we're not taking any action. This is just sort of educational for us, so I don't see why you have to take a powder on this one.
The only action you would take is if you just wanted to have us direct any comments back to the township, because that's what this is part of, is just the open comment period, but it's not necessarily like you're approving it or anything like that. So it's purely some feedback that we would give to the township. And we actually thought this was good timing, you know, this is a part that doesn't necessarily abut Garfield Township and just Section of 31, but it does, Section 31, US 31 does traverse through Garfield, so it's part of this larger network. And I know there's been efforts in the past to improve US 31 all the way from the Green Lake Township all the way up to Acme Township. So this is kind of seeing a segment of it. We also think this is a great opportunity to see what they've done, also to hear what their plans are for implementation, because we think this could be, in essence, a kind of a model that we could apply to some of our corridors that we would like to do some corridor planning for. Mainly South Airport is the one that's on our list of things to do. And this, while it's definitely in terms of its character, I mean, obviously they're commercial quarters, but slightly different, there's certainly process, some of the tools that were applied or intended to be applied as part of the implementation are something that we can really learn from, and I see could have a lot of benefit to at least taking a look at what they've done in East Bay and see if it can, that kind of process and output could be replicated in some of our corridors.
Yeah, so we put a link to the video that was part of the presentation to East Bay Township. We thought of it as kind of a training exercise, just watching it ourselves, delves into some of the things that they did as part of the process of preparing a corridor plan. So if we decide to pursue this, this is just kind of learning by example from what their method was. And if the planning commission's okay with it, we figured it's about a little over 30 minutes, would actually be helpful to just watch that as sort of a training exercise as part of this meeting. The speaker is Chris's colleague. You can actually help in how to pronounce his name, John I...
Icoangeli. What is it? John Icoangeli.
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 I think I added more syllables than there were in that. But, yeah, he does a really excellent kind of summary of that whole process. So without further ado, is that, is the pleasure of the planning commission?
I'm not going to help contribute to.
Yeah.
It's up to you guys.
I'd like to see it.
We discussed this earlier, so it should better work right now.
Good morning, everyone. My name is John Michael Angelai. I'm a partner at Becker Raider. I'm a professional planner, but I also specialize in economic development for the company and for our municipal client. For those here in the audience, the slideshow doesn't have a pink tone to it. It's the projectors, I think, in need of a new ball. But for those that are going to be watching the video, I'm sure the slides will be very clear and understandable. The project has been sequenced over the last year to really kind of delve into what the issues are relative to the corridor. Aside from a project in production at the very beginning, there was a lot of different techniques used between the engagement. These were surveys, stakeholder meetings, focus groups, there was a charrette, and then several other meetings with players in the township, with property owners and interested parties and township residents to keep them informed. The process looked at opportunity sites, both public and private in terms of redevelopment and potential opportunities. We're in the process now of developing an action plan, and what I want to talk to you about is some potential implementation strategies. One of the things that I will say that successful corridors in downtown areas that we work in is that there needs to be a political resolve in terms of the governmental unit that is sponsoring the project. I know that the Township Board has been involved in this, planning commission. So going forward based on implementation, successful implementation is going to be top down and bottom up. Everybody's got to be on the same page, working towards the same goal. And that includes different partners that are going to be involved in the corridor. That's BETA, DNR, MDOT, for example, private property. Over the years, we've tended to rely on a best practice that was developed by the Urban Land Institute about 20 years ago, which is the 10 principles to reinvent a corridor. And you've done some, one is ignite leadership, nurture partnership. We have partners here around the table, private, public, transportation entities, the Conservancy, MDOT's involved, et cetera. So you have to really ignite leadership, you have to nurture partnership, because there's so many different players that are involved in the redevelopment process, it's just not the township. It's a multitude of different people that have an interest on the development of this corridor. I would state that people that come into Traverse City, tourists, they define Traverse City not by, not only by the city, but also by the corridor, the US 31 corridor. In fact, most people, when they come to Traverse City, stay on the corridor because they utilize the beach and the resources. We have to anticipate evolution in terms of uses within the corridor. Probably 15 years ago, we probably went to Blockbuster to get videos. They're nonexistent today, all right? Fast food restaurants like Panera Bread started out with large dining rooms. The current footprints of Panera Bread, we have 10 tables. They basically cater to takeout and drive-in. So things in the market evolve. Hotels, for example, are evolving in terms of extended stay, some of them are more boutique-oriented. So you have to know the market as part of this. And the corridor has a multitude of different uses. It has hotels, it has restaurants, residential, it has offices, it has public, private, but also public open spaces. So there's a multitude of different that complement each other and in some cases compete with each other. One of the things with, when you reinvent a corridor, there's much discussion about putting back retail zone. ULI, which is a nonprofit out of Washington DC, its membership has the largest development companies in the United States that are members, the largest real estate companies, really focused on land development. And what they've found out is when you spread retail out along the corridor too long, it loses its marketability. And they suggest that you could pack retail into nodes, and then in between the nodes you have other uses like hotels, open space, even residential. So that's one of the things maybe the implementation team needs to take a look at in the future. One of the biggest things that this is involving corridors, any size, any rotation within the United States, is we have detained the traffic, okay? I know that MDOT is one of the partners as part of this process. MDOT does a pretty good job of managing municipal expectations. However, I will say, I'll lend my funds to MDOT, it's time that the township and the implementation committee manage their expectations. One of the things that came out in this process that is concerning to me is the number of people that have flagged the unsafe conditions on US 31 pedestrians. Also, when we take a look at the results from the open house, most of the votes in faith were providing safe access across 31. This is not only a township responsibility, but a responsibility of MDOT to figure it out. And it may include being somewhat innovative on how this is approached in the future. So this is not just a township issue, this is a regional issue in terms of how you get people across the street, from hotels to the state park, to the beaches, to the restaurants, and make it safe for all users, just not vehicles. One of the things that is in the best practices is creating a sense of place. And this can be done for a variety of reasons. This can be done at intersections, creating significant areas of place where intersections are safe and people can cross and traffic can move through at a relatively tame pace. It's also creating places like parks, which we have, places where people can get is created. Those opportunities have been explored. We want to amplify the character, that's not a problem here, we have a lot of diversity in the corridor, but periodically we have to eradicate ugliness. There's some properties that need to be taken a look at relative to, they have a couple of options, fewer degree investment themselves, or we go through a transformational process in terms of their redevelopment. And probably the most important component of the 10 is the money and the regulations we're applying. I've seen too many corridor plans, too many downtown redevelopment plans that have very lofty goals that do not follow the priorities or strategies, and money is not filtered into those developments, nor are regulations in order to help with the implementation process. So I always tell a community who are going through this initially, I say, take a look at these 10 principles, because you're not going to go wrong because they have been tried and they have been tested over the last decade throughout the United States. And I think the township is doing, and this team and the implementation team is doing a good job of fixing that, some of these 10 principles, and I think it will work for you. East Bay implementation is going to be incremental. I have to stress that incremental, you're not going out with one large project that's going to change the character of the corridor. It's got to be a series of small projects that are done incrementally with an overall strategy in framing. And that's one point, while I think six various components. The first one is public funding, and that's in the areas of grants. Now, I'm not going to give you a list of 30 different grants, because in today's world, the grants change almost on an annual basis, depending on who has the money and what type of program is required. But there are grants available. Claire, SAM have done a great job of bringing in different funding through the township to help with this project. So there's money from MDOT, for example, which is the PATH, the Transportation Enhancement Program. There's money through USDA, money from DNR, there's funds from MDC, okay? And they all come in at different sequence, they all have different eligibility, they all have different things that they want to achieve. Some of the projects of MDC want to create points, so they have projects now with eligibility, which talk about their different agencies. MDNR, their program, for example, through land and water, specific eligibility requirements where their money's going to go. So public funding is important, but it's going to be a variety of different sources. And then there's public development. We have DNR that's on the site. TARP provides trail systems and non-motorized components. BETA is public transit, and they have the township. So we have public development that occurs within the corridor, and those different entities have their own projects and we have improvement programs that target their improvements within their, within their systems. But we have to be particularly important to watch what their priorities are and make sure that some of the priorities and funding that these agencies have are targeted with strategies in the implementation of it, okay? And then obviously, we have private development. The fourth component is promotions and marketing, which the township has done a great job in with branding, the East Bay Beach District, with standardized logo, brand, marketing, pamphlets, website. So that part of implementation is already up and running, and the township has done a great job with kind of tying all that together. That promotions and marketing is not only papered for on the website, but appears on banners, appears on a variety, will appear on a variety of different signage throughout the corridor to make it a, basically, the marketing through the corridor in a very consistent and, and basis. And then there's regulations, okay? This is, this is something that is missed by a lot of authorities and communities, is that they focus on site design standards specifically with their public right of. This is the style of light, this is the type of signage, this is the type of landscape. But they don't carry that over into the private property. So from some community, you drive down the corridor and everything looks nice and you know... then you look into the private properties, everything is a mixture of whoever wants to put anything up. They have different lighting styles, different landscaping, different types of signage. So regulations need to be put in place, basically with theories, the public vision into the private property, in terms of standardization, and I'll show you about that in a minute. One of the things that you can do, as part of this, is actually, in some communities, they've actually prepared a construction sheet, 24 by 36, they have all the models of all the lighting, they have a table of all the landscaping, they have the standards that they improve the signage, and when somebody comes in and wants to do development, they say, "Oh, by the way, you need to include this in your construction plans, because this is what you're going to implement." And then there's organizational focus. And here, within the community and within the corridor, you have an implementation, the state of Michigan has created a tool called Improvement Authority, which would be the implementation team, a loop on steroids, as part of an authority that has the ability to focus implementation strategically within the corridor, and that would be the sixth component. I want to give you an example, Claire said, "Can you show us an example of a corridor improvement authority?" Now, I'm going to show you here the Plymouth Road Development Authority, which is in the former Michigan, which is in Lake County. Now, they actually, they are a former township, six miles by six miles, and they have, just like you do, they have mile roads, but they're not named three mile, four mile, they're named Middle Belt, Maryman Farming. They created, they used, this was before the corridor improvement authority was actually legislated by the state. So they formed prior to the CIA, the Downtown Development Authority, but didn't call it the Downtown Development Authority, they called it Plymouth Road Development Authority. And based on our work with them, we have CIA that are available, they were using CIA, because that's what they were trying to do, is develop a six-mile corridor. This was created in the mid-1990s as a DDA, like I said, it was before CIA was actually in place. And we worked with them for only 15 years, using the 10 Principles to redevelop the corridor. And part of that was based on a long-range plan, like we're doing here, is, this is how we want the corridor to develop, this is our vision and expectation, these are the issues that we need to resolve. And they went through that, and they used that as their footprint, as their blueprint for over 15 years of service, advisors, designers, and implementers for them. They funded the work through a variety of grants at the time, and that was like 15 years, 20 years ago. So the grants have changed, but some of the eligibility is still the same. And then they used tax increment finance as a major financing tool, to match the funds with the grants and the private investment. And they went through regulatory changes, in terms of requiring private development to meet some of the same standards as public development, and in turn, they saw a significant private reinvestment in the corridor. This is an example of how their corridor started to develop. They had a lot of new investment, millions of dollars. You can see the landscaping in front, that was part of the PRDA's responsibility, is to provide the improvements to the corridor, but internally, those improvements were extended into the private property. They had development at the time, this use wasn't really a big term 20 years ago, but they had projects that actually were mixed horizontal, mixed dual-sided, projects that had fronted on Plymouth Road, were turned into retail, as the slide shows. Behind those retail, they put in actual housing. So a lot of the developments tried to create the synergy between retail and pedestrian. The pedestrian developments were connected to the public, the retail developments, so they started forming the synergies that walked the building, the six-mile corridor. So you had different nodes within the corridor, you had a mixture of uses, that became almost like small little villages, where people could live, and they could walk, and they could go to restaurants, they could go to different retail stores, without having to get in a car and ride around. So that was some of the positive aspects. Now, I want you to take a look at the slide in detail, maybe you can see it on the screen. The lighting that is the headlights that are facing the parking lot, those are actually lights that were installed by the private property owners, based on regulatory standards adopted by the city. And you can see that those lights extend all the way into the development. Those same lighting styles are used on the streetlights, so when you ride down the corridor, the corridor is just not the right way, the corridor extends all of the adjacent properties. So it becomes a entity, a unit, it becomes a district. Landscape in this extent, of course, there's a lot of sidewalks that walk the building. And each of the mile roads, the PRDA wanted to make the mile roads, because they're very heavily traveled, it's probably the same average daily traffic that you see in the summer on 31 in the corridor. They wanted to make each of the intersections recognizable, so they developed a standard to landscape and make, more or less, these were mine construction. And then we set up, okay, these are pedestrian crossings. Each of the intersections put in mast arms, they got rid of the overhead span wires, they put in the zebra crossings. Each of the intersections became pedestrian crossings that were all fine issue, went down the corridor. Every eye of the corridor had a definable node and definable crossings. And then this is an example, again, of how the corridor actually, over that period of time, developed. Their right away was a little bit larger than what you have here, so they were able to have some expansive green space, they had an area for landscaping. So this has turned out to be a really, had us involved to be in a very successful corridor that has had significant investment. One of the projects which happened in the corridor was Wonderland Mall, was one of the first set of malls that were developed interstate of Michigan. And the mall had gone into, like you see some of the shopping centers today, the mall had started to lose tenants, and basically is functionally obsolete. Because of the investment made through the community into the corridor, the mall was actually scraped clean, and the site was redeveloped as a outdoor, kind of like a living center, with some, a couple of small mid-boxes, a lot of small retail stores, and a lot of other development around it, all integrated into the corridor. So it became very successful in terms of attracting private investment. The Open House results, I went through the boards, and picked out a couple of key projects that I think are very doable, actionable, and could be short-term. On one, it said encourage housing opportunities, and another one of the boards said, you know, partner with Beta to enhance that. The bus shelters, the bus pullouts were really very notable in terms of the results. Now, we may think of these as complex projects, because we don't have a lot of right away, but this is an opportunity where the Township, Beta, MDOT, and the private property owners can work together in terms of identifying appropriate locations for these integrated bus shelters and pullouts, and where the Township and the private property owners work together. We've done this in other communities, where the private property owners provide easement to the Township, or maybe in this case, MDOT, or Beta, wherever the strategy is. But the easement then is provided for purpose, and that purpose is defined in the easement. And we're able then to implement type of project that the community is envisioning, where there's actual pull-off for the buses with an integrated shelter seating, landscaping, lighting, all that good stuff. So we take that model, we maybe employ that throughout the corridor, but this is going to be a project that is public, private, and partnership. Public in terms of Township and Beta, MDOT to some degree, private in terms of working with private property owners. Identifying areas where people have an understanding, maybe a bus stop would be appropriate, because the people that are off of the bus are people that are going to work in that particular area, because you have a lot of hotels, you have a lot of staff, you have some other businesses, obviously you have the State Park, maybe a great opportunity to partner with DNR on this as well. So there's opportunities here, like I said, they're incremental and they're small. The Open House, again, I'm challenging both the Township in a way, but really I'm challenging MDOT to take a look more creatively at how we can enhance and foster safe pedestrian access across 31. So pedestrians were, they would like a separated crossing, and the Traverse City State Park, which is very long linear, and people highly selected hawk crossings, which are pedestrian-activated lip crossings that stop the traffic between three and four miles. This was an example that came out of Charette, of what these crossings would look like. My recommendation would be that you have multiple of these, you don't just have one, excuse me, you don't have just one of these crossings, but you have a series of these as strategic locations. So when drivers are using the corridor, they become more sensitive to where the pedestrian crossings are. And in some communities, this is more than just hawk crossings, some communities will use elevated crosswalks. So actually, when cars approach the pedestrian crossing, they're driving up on a different type of pavement, in order to decrease the queue, and that's a cue for them to slow down, because they're coming in a special area. Again, I challenge the public agencies to be innovative and creating these type of situations, based on the fact that it is now public knowledge, that residents, businesses, people that have participated in the process have flagged this as a serious issue on the corridor. So it needs to be taken seriously, and it needs some innovation applied to how we can make this happen. And I know that we can, there's talented people that work in all of the various agencies, and can be done. We have to figure out how to get the yes, not maybe, not maybe in a couple of years, but everybody has to figure out how to get the yes, and that's going to require a limited collaboration, and I think innovation, because the corridor has, over the period of decades, has just expanded in terms of the number of lanes, and every time those lanes expand, pedestrian safety comes into question. So there's got to be some improvement here. In terms of Open House and access enhancement of public spaces, we want to do like the four-mile pier, and we want access to the Traverse City State Park. The four-mile pier is a really good example, it's something that's doable, the right way is out there, it's under the ownership of the county, the Township has already talked with the county, there's some collaboration, if we can utilize some of that right way to provide a nice accessible point to little Traverse Bay, so that would be a great public project, that can be done. And another Open House, people were asked how to support place making, and people said regulatory revisions, and would like to encourage things like outdoor lighting, site design standards for the corridor. Now, these are not our recommendations, this is what we're seeing from the results of the Open House that was conducted a couple of weeks ago. So there is ideas out there from both property owners, business owners, and the community, relative to, there is a lot of alignment in terms of what needs to happen within the corridor, and I think that really builds a strong foundation for a good strategy in order to move forward. One of the things that I think is somewhat, is very doable, and will really provide the, kind of the mechanism that you can move forward with significant transformational changes within the corridor, is the creation of corridor improvement authority. That is a, based on state statute, fundamentally it has a specific mission, and that's corridor revitalization. That's the commission of the authorities, revitalize the corridor, make it more viable, basically, make sure that it is, in a result, it increases opportunities for the community, to jobs, for economic growth, and for tax viability. So over a period of years, the corridor improvement authority will enhance and improve not only the corridor for the property owners along the corridor, but the benefit comes to the community and the county, and the region. It involves the various tax incentives, the Township, the county, Beta's a tax incentive authority, they're going to be involved in it. And one of the key components of corridor improvement authority is its ability to use tax increment finance. That's the source of funding that is needed to sustain the revenue, that comes under the authority to get this project started. I will emphasize this over and over and over again. A tax increment financing is not a new tax. Tax increment financing is not a new tax. When people hear the word tax, you know, everybody gets a little bit prickly about it, "Oh my God, we're going to have another mill," it is not. I wish they would have never used this term, I would prefer it to just say incremental finance, but tax increment finance is not a new tax. It is a redistribution of taxes that are captured, often the incremental increases in taxable value as the corridor financially improves. So instead of all of the money going to the Township or the county or the data, a portion of that taxes that's paid normally, gets picked up and used by the authority in order to implement this, its goals and objectives. And this is how TIP works. Let's say we put a tax increment authority in place in 2025. The taxable value for the district would be considered the base value of the building. All the tax incentives still get the same amount of money over, on the base, every year, so they don't lose any money that they had already received in 2020. As the value of the corridor increases incrementally, so if I have a hotel, and let's say my taxable value is $5 million, and let's say next year, my value goes up 3%, because under the state tax law, it says that my valuation will fall off based on the cost of living, but not more than 5%. So let's say the values of the corridor go up 3%. The tax, the corridor improvement authority will receive incremental increase in the 3% incremental value increase. That's it. The other tax incentives will be also. So the typical adoption threshold for any type of authority in Michigan, Water Authority, DDA, CIA, tax increment finance authority, all of those, the typical adoption threshold is the adoption happens before the fourth Monday and day, that's when the tax assessment will for that year is finally approved. So what I'm positioned here is, we have an opportunity, Township has an opportunity to actually create a CIA, and they still have time to put in place a new planning TIP, which would be approved by next May, 2025, and they could start, the CIA could start about six months after that, collecting the source revenue source to create that revenue structure. The other tax incentives would be involved in that decision-making, as the development plans improve. The way the CIA, as the Township Board passes the resolution of its intent to create a corridor improvement authority, they can't take any action on that for 60 days, they have to notify all the other tax incentives that they're contending on the State Department's CIA, so those tax incentives have the ability to comment if they like it or not, and after 60 days, the Township Board can enact by resolution, creating CIA. The CIA is passed by state statute, in one fact, first, raising board, that's its files, but secondly, state says that created the laws of planning. You have to have a strategy. Well, you pretty much already have that done, because you went through that over the last year and a half. So you already have the development plan pretty much in place, you've identified some key projects out there. And then you also put as a component, the tax increment finance plan. That's where the tax incentives come in, relative to potential negotiations, relative to the capture of the revenues. The, without a corridor improvement authority, without a sustainable source of revenue, you're going to be very reliant strictly on private investment. going to be very reliant strictly on private investment and going after, which is not a guarantee, various grant funding because of Claire and Sam and everybody, their increments. You can't, no one's going to have one hundred percent success rate at giving state federal funding. It's all competitive. It's statewide. It's all based on increased productivity. The authorities in order to work need to have some level of sustainable revenue in order to manage private investment. So that's one of the actionable items that I'm recommending. In addition, because people identified the four mile corridor pier as a great opportunity to place making, my suggestion is that the township amend its five-year park and recreation plan to include the four mile pier project because then that project will become eligible for being our funding under the park's program. I would suggest that we apply for a tap grant in order to start the mid-block process. I would, this is that important thing with MDOT. In fact, I would suggest that MDOT and the township be co-sponsors of the tap grant. Okay? The regional TSA needs to act as a partner in this process to get the statewide funding focused on this issue. So MDOT, instead of being the reviewer, needs to be the co-sponsor. And I think that you just don't need to focus on the mid cross, mid-block crossings between three and four mile. I think we need to be a little bit more aggressive and take a look at other locations. So only go after the tap grant, we're not just building one, but be able to multiple hot crossings in order to satisfy the concerns that have been raised by the community, the business owners, and the property owners. Think the township needs to create the East Bay District, Oldhamley District, which includes the site design standards that private property owners are going to have to follow and conduct from. That is a regulation issue that's actually in conjunction with internal planning office, planning commission, and the township board in consultation with private property owners. Because I know that Claire and Sam like to make everything engaged in terms of this place. Critical that we have a set of regulations that applies to the public and private properties. I think there's an opportunity to work with data to identify potential pull-up locations and shelter site designs. And this may be a couple of year process, but I think a separate review needs to be conducted where the appropriate location would be for these new strategies to implement. And then lastly, establish the CIA and the development plan to be components. So there's some projects that the implementation team can start working on without having a corridor improvement authority. But I think a CIA is actually, should be an outcome of this process and put in place a recognized forum that can, that can work and implement this. In addition, that the implementation team and members on the implementation team, along with the board, the representative of the corridor, would basically create the same membership for corridor improvement authority. So instead of having a formal township implementation team as part of the corridor, there would be eventually an implementation component and the corridor improvement authority in order to continually move this process forward. As I had mentioned at the beginning, this is an incremental process. This is not going to, not going to achieve the results in one of five years. This is something that takes in some communities fifteen, twenty years of consistent work. If anybody has been, for example, to Marquette and has come into town and seen the waterfront, the townhomes, the parks, the non-motorized trails, that was actually a forty-five acre abandoned Central Wisconsin railroad, a transfer line. And the city said back in nineteen ninety-six and seven, we have to take responsibility to redevelop that. And then in two thousand and five, they put in place a strategy to buy it and to remediate and to redevelop it. And this is two thousand and twenty-four, and a couple of the last remaining outlets are under development today. So that process has been in place twenty-five years, but it has transformationally changed Marquette into a whole different meaning, where twenty-five years ago, that property contributed nothing to the city tax base, provided no opportunity for people to live there who experienced the outburst and natural disasters. And then today, that property is the highest tax-generated property in the city. So it's transformationally effective. It took two over, two decades to be developed. So when you get into this, don't think about, we're going to make this change in a year or five years. You're setting the platform, the blueprint, and the foundation to make this change over the next three, two, twenty years. So some of you that are on the board that dated in your twenties or thirties, when you are in your fifties or fifty-five and they're racking down the corridor, you can remember what it used to look like, but today what it now looks like because twenty, twenty-five years in the past, there was enough more thought to put in place the mechanism, the transformation, and change how the corridor was going to be, how it was going to act, and how it was going to be. So with that, if you have any questions? Thank you very much.
So when we watched that, we thought that that's, you know, that presentation was really good illustration of, you know, what's involved in a corridor plan. And, you know, certainly they should be commended on the great effort. And then when I'm looking at South Airport Road, which is probably one of the most significant corridors, certainly in the township, in Garfield Township, but in this whole region, and has great opportunity to really transform itself, particularly when, I think what's really important in that process is the partnerships. There has to be, and it's not just the public entities. It really has to be a lot of the property owners, business owners along that corridor that really partner with the community and really lead that transformation. So it's exciting to see what's happening in East Bay, and we thought, well, maybe that could be something that could be replicated here as well, so. Yes, if you just have any, if there, if you want, there's no action that you need necessarily formally, but if you want us to convey any comments back to East Bay Township regarding this corridor plan, which is a sub-plan for their, as part of their overall master plan, you could direct us if you want. It's not required, though.
Yeah. So I guess in my opinion, the biggest thing that he's talking about is you got to have the buy-in politically, you got to have the buy-in financially. I've been around politics a long time, and I've seen lots of these, and they sit on the shelf. So you spend twenty, forty thousand dollars, whatever it is, to put together a plan, and you don't have that foundation under it, and it sits. So a lot of work before you start doing this.
Yeah, I would agree. I think one of the keys, if we were to pursue something like this, let's say for South Airport Road, I think one of the advantages we have is we have the county road commission, which is already a partner with the township. It's a little bit different than dealing with MDOT, which is a much larger. And I think the road commission would agree that the, you know, the corridor in terms of South Airport is one of their priorities. As a matter of fact, when they did the east-west corridor study back in twenty nineteen, the number one recommendation out of that was access management on the number one corridor, which was South Airport Road. The thing that I, it obviously, the road commission is interested in the roadway. And I think where, if we had them as a partner, at least on the public side, is to be, then have to engage the property owners along that area as well. But there needs to be leadership from that side as well. There needs to be, there needs to be property owners, business owners that see the value in reinvesting into that corridor. We think that, you know, I think there's a feeling, particularly when you look at some of the areas along that corridor where they're pushing, I think some of the counts there, you know, are forty thousand cars or more a day going through that in some of those areas, particularly in peak times in the summer months, that it really stymies the whole corridor, not just only for transportation purposes, but the ability for businesses along there to actually function. It just kind of, that sometimes just kind of bogs down. So this is, does give us the ability to at least have, there's a mechanism here to at least think, how can this be better? And what can be done to make it better? And I think having that corridor improvement authority is a key part that could be leveraged with the resources that may be available to the road commission, as well as all the private investment that we continuously see on that corridor. We still see, you know, new development, and we're going to see new development along that corridor. And that's where that mechanism and that, those types of plans, it's definitely a good opportunity. But yes, that, that leadership and partnership is key, and that's why that's the number one principle that needs to be accomplished in terms of any redevelopment of a corridor.
I think that the clear and simple language around TIF was worth the price of admission for that video. That was really helpful for me as a newer planning commissioner to understand how TIF works. One question that I have about that and using that for a CIA would be, so we've got a corridor that we're potentially looking at that crosses several municipalities. Would that look, could or would that look like just Garfield Township? Does that look like Garfield and the adjoining ones that have spaces in that corridor? Or does it have to be the overarching municipality of the county?
So when we're looking at this, you know, and one thing I think that's really important is that that's, the corridor improvement authority is a toolbox. It's a, it's a, it's a big tool. But it's really comes after you've done the plan, and it may or may not apply, you may or may not need it. But if it is, it's something that, in the case of South Airport, you know, we'd be looking, if we were to do a study, it would be from Silver Lake Road, and we've already talked to East Bay, and it would go all the way to Three Mile. So really, it's East Bay Township and primarily Garfield. I mean, we have the lion's share of it. The city, obviously, there's a portion of that with the airport. But I think from the standpoint, how you would apply the CIA, the planning process would determine that. I know the road commission is already looking at making improvements to South Airport Road from basically Costco down to Three Mile. There's that one section, and they're working with the East Bay Township on that right now. But the plan will determine what's, what's needed to make, to apply the CIA if that was to be used. We thought, one of the areas that's probably one of the most congested areas in the South Airport corridor is that part between Barlow and Lefraneur and Garfield. And there's, it gets kind of tight in there. And we thought if there was a mechanism whereby we had an access management plan, and an access management plan basically goes down that corridor and says, this would function better if we combined, you know, these driveways here, moved these over here, aligned this, so it makes for better traffic flow and so forth. We feel that that would be a funding mechanism that would help, along with resources that could be contributed by the road commission, to work with private property owners along that particular corridor. Some of those, there's a lot of parking lots along there that aren't connected. Internally, those could be connected and funneled out to driveways. We could work with, on designing that in a way that benefits those property owners. It benefits the users that are passing through there, but it also benefits the customers that are trying to reach some of those properties, whether they're entering or exiting. But it's a, it's a very powerful tool if it's applied. We feel that this is, I mean, everybody knows South Airport Road in this area, and a lot of people try to avoid it. And a lot of people, I think, well, our feeling is, is we have an opportunity here. We just finished the master plan that we'd like to look at corridor. Probably the other big corridor we want to look at is US thirty-one, but certainly South Airport is since its critical nature of crossing east-west through this whole urbanized area that it really makes a lot of sense.
Does the CIA legislation allow for multi-jurisdictional TIFs?
I don't know that for certain.
Is that kind of what you were asking a little bit? All right.
The only thing is, is it, is it would probably, it's usually applied in more commercial areas. So the part that is in East Bay is primarily residential through there.
So it sounds like staff is interested in pursuing, looking into something similar to what East Bay did for their Beach District, as far as a planning exercise and considering the opportunities therein. Are any more further comments or thoughts for staff regarding the East Bay Beach District community engagement and corridor plan? John?
I guess I don't personally see any need for us to direct staff to make any comments to East Bay Township in the immediate timeframe. But it sounds like staff is pretty excited about this possibility. I hadn't given it much thought, but it's intriguing. But it seems like one of the very first things that we need to do, if there's going to be any action taken on this, is find out whether staff visits with the town board or whether we have a joint meeting with the town board. But if the town board likes the idea, that's one thing. If they don't like the idea, then that's the end of that, probably. So at some point, it would, I would think that kind of a early on discussion ought to, ought to be had.
Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things that we would probably want to do is maybe afford some time for the planning commission to talk a little bit about this, a little bit more in detail. And we could kind of come up with some ideas in terms of, does this make sense? And then maybe then can relay a message to the town board and see where they sit on that, you know, in terms of, you know, does it make sense?
I would be interested to see some success stories. Like, it seems to me that something like a CIA would help immensely with economic development and draw businesses into the area. So I would be curious if in your research, you can identify a couple of places where the implementation of this worked really well for that. The other thing that I'm thinking about, this is outside of our township boundaries, but when we get people coming out of the airport, the very first road that they see is South Airport. And so entering into that corridor as they head into town potentially is impactful for visitors and residents alike.
Well, thanks, everyone. Staff, you feel like you've got the guidance you need?
Yes.
Or absence of guidance, I guess?
Yeah.
To follow on John's comments?
Yeah. We could at least reply by email that we, they had no comments, and we've watched the video. But yeah, if we know no formal comments, then that's perfectly fine.
All right. Well, if there's nothing else, we'll move on to item B under new business, PD twenty twenty-five dash thirty-three, twenty twenty-five planning commission priorities and master plan implementation matrix.
I'll provide a little bit of an overview. Kind of previewed a little bit, talking a little bit about potentially doing a corridor plan for South Airport. But for a little context, past few years, we've done it more in January, one of the earlier study sessions, but doing a implementation matrix and kind of work plan for the year. One big change from last year is that we have now adopted the new master plan, which occurred in July of twenty twenty-four. So this had an updated matrix. We organized kind of all the goals and objectives, and we can build a work plan or use that as a guide sort of from that. So we at least put, we acknowledge that we're actually working on a couple of things with, as we've discussed earlier tonight, the substantial construction, the lighting. We didn't have any specific updates at this meeting on signs, still kind of figuring out the legal review of that and kind of need a catalyst for it, but more to come on that. The other thing is that we're working towards the capital improvements plan. The other, I guess the staff thing we forgot to mention earlier is, yesterday I had the initial kickoff meeting of the CIP committee. So there'll be more to come on that soon. So those are both work plan related things, but then kind of the big items that staff wanted to put forth was the idea of a corridor plan, and you just saw an example of saw an example of, and how another community went about it. Specifically, it also ties to several of the, one of the goals and several of the objectives within that one about streets and roads, specifically support the improvement, maintenance and connectivity of streets and roads. So we already kind of got into the details a little bit, but that is an idea that is out there. The other kind of bigger implementation item that has been on staff's radar and that we want to bring for planning commission discussion was doing the mixed-use zoning districts. So our future land use plan shows a couple of different types of mixed-use areas. And this was new in this iteration of the master plan. And the implementation of that could include creating some underlying mixed-use districts. Could take some of the principles that we've seen in PUDs, but actually create a district. It could function as an underlying zoning district. It could be an overlay, which it sounds like what East Bay is doing for like the design standards of that district and some of their mixed use. We've also seen examples from other communities. So like PUDs, we have used a lot in the township's history. And there's a lot of actors, and I think there's over like 30 PUDs that has happened over the last several decades. And it's definitely a good tool to have in the toolbox. From staff's kind of observation, it does add a lot of complexity to, because now you have not only just the ordinance, every PUD is kind of its own ordinance in that sense. And then amending them can be somewhat tricky as we've seen some of them come before the planning commission. But a lot of them has also achieved a lot of goals that we wanted to see. So the idea of doing a mixed-use district is either going forward or if it is appropriate, retrofitting back to some of these, does it make sense to have some underlying mixed-use districts that we can work from that are right in the ordinance? Sort of the principle of like the PUD goes above and beyond things that are not achievable in any one district. So the idea of a mixed-use district would be make those things achievable in an underlying district. And we've seen examples from communities. It was at the national conference last year, one of the communities presented, when they totally redid their zoning ordinance, got rid of all their PUDs. And they figured out like in the new districts, what makes the most sense for each one and kind of reset the, reset the regulatory framework. Since Garfield has recently done a zoning ordinance rewrite about in 2015, I think that would be quite the step to take. But creating the mixed-use districts and then seeing, does it make sense to apply them somewhere? Seems like a good kind of first foray into that. And that also meets some of the goals and objectives of the master plan as well. So as an attachment, there is the actual implementation matrix that has all of the categories and goals and objectives that are part of the master plan. And this can be a guide. These are just things that have been on, on the radar. If there are other projects we should be looking at, zoning ordinance amendments we should be reviewing, potential amendments to be reviewing, it's a good time to formulate what should be in the planning commission's work plan. So thoughts?
Thinking this is, I'm feeling like this is really open-ended. And I'm not really sure how to go about picking out five things that you want to work, you know, that we would have you work on this year. I'm not, what are other thoughts?
And a lot of the objectives are ongoing things as well. They may not necessarily be a one point in time. A lot of them just kind of mentioned either ongoing processes or collaborations.
What, what items on this list constitute an actionable item by the planning commission or staff?
Well, I think, I mean, we, we always know that there's, every year we kind of go through a batch of zoning ordinance amendments, which we've kind of already done. And I think the one that's still, we still need to work on is that sign regulations, that's still going to remain a priority. The CIP is timely because that's something that in the Planning Enabling Act is actually required following creation of a master plan. So that's, that's something underway as a, as a function of the township board. The planning commission will be a part of that to some extent in reviewing that and seeing how it helps to implement or relate back to the master plan. But I think the, I think those two, the two priorities that we would like at least to initiate this year and looking at in further depth is, is, is the corridor planning and the mixed-use districts. I mean, those are things that are going to take some time to go through, particularly on the mixed-use districts. We're looking at some of the changes currently underway that are happening with like the Cherryland Center. We're, we're seeing changes happening at the Grand Traverse Mall. There's some of those other mixed-use areas that we would like to see how can we really work towards better advancing some of the principles are, that are in the master plan and in our ordinance for design that maybe work a little bit more effectively than how it's done, has been done previously. One of the challenges that we have in, in some of the PUDs is that the owners or the people that developed that PUD are no longer around. It's not always the case, but in, in some cases it is. They're, for instance, even like the Grand Traverse Mall, it's not necessarily a PUD, but that owner is, it's the third owner from the original owner on that site. And we expect that it could be additional owners. And, and so you have this evolutionary process of the ownership of these, some of these sites. Yet we're still going back to the original PUD that may have been developed 20, 30 years ago. And so we're trying to figure out what is the best way, not just from our standpoint of administering that, but kind of applying the standards that we really want to see and making it easier for those developments to occur and happen so that they're not constrained by that. But that's where, I, I think that's something that we would be really interested in, in starting and working towards. And not just on the larger areas, but also on the smaller areas. For instance, the West Front Street area is another area that we're interested in working on that, to try to kind of apply those standards that are in, you know, fresh from the master plan and seeing how we can really work it, make, make it easier for the redevelopment of those or the development of those in a way that there, there's some fluidity to the, how those developments occur. By at the same time, holding them, ensuring that there's going to be quality development that's going to be happening and it's coordinated in a way that is not negatively impacting the community. But I kind of say, those are really kind of the areas that we're, we really see that there could be some value in moving forward. There will always be a lot of other projects too that will, will pop up. And, but on those ones that we really want to move forward, I think these are ones that's, that make sense.
So you guys are thinking that these two things, consideration of a South Airport corridor plan and a mixed-use, consideration of mixed-use zoning districts are significantly impact the, the various items on the, the matrix and contribute, and those are good things to rise to the top. So I guess short of any thoughts from the planning commission about any, anything else that we think we want staff to start working on, we can probably just say, let's get to it. But I'd like to, you know, I want to make sure we're not overlooking something that anybody else thinks is important that maybe staff is overlooking.
And one of the things that, I don't want to interject too much here, but just to understand that when we go through some of these things, it's not like there's going to be, some of these changes are incremental that we're making already on, on some of the things we're, we're doing, whether it's a, some of the projects that the township is doing, it could be something as simple as putting in a sidewalk, or it could be a tweak in the zoning ordinance which adjusts something happening so that when we're doing site plans. So some of these aren't necessarily as broad and big as like, let's say, doing the master plan or something like that. Sometimes we're, we're doing this incrementally in other ways.
What is the commission's thoughts? John?
Well, I think in the matrix, you've got like a dozen categories and goals, and they're all important. But I, I think I would concur with your thoughts that six and seven, housing and transportation are probably two of the ones that would rise to the top as far as urgency. I mean, they're all important, but, but housing has been a topic around the whole region and around most of the country, I think, for a long time. So the sooner we can figure out whether there's anything we can do about that or not, probably the better. It, it does look like under, housing under 6.5, the idea of mixed-use districts is, is certainly right there in the housing topic. Do you think it makes sense to tackle that one by itself? Or does it need to be looked at along with some of the other stuff under, under six?
Which one again, under six?
Well, 6.5 is the one you cited in the report, and I think that's correct.
You know, I think one of the things that we're seeing, so we've often talked about, we're looking to see a mix of different housing types. We're getting a lot of attached housing, whether it's senior living or multifamily. We're not getting a lot of single-family homes. We're really kind of struggling with that one a little bit. There's some incentives potentially with the new brownfield housing TIF that's out there that might be able to, I'm not sure how it's going to work with homeownership that works really well with apartments and so forth, rental housing. But some of these things that we're seeing, you know, that aside of, and that one, I, I'm not sure if, how much the township actually can do, other than to say, we really want to see some single-family homes, particularly starter homes. And that one will kind of always remain on, on the top end. Some of these other ones that are through there, some of those other objectives, one thing that I've really noticed is if you look at the pattern of our development, we're not doing a lot of greenfield development in Garfield Township. If there is a lot of housing or even development period, it's usually these kind of infill pieces or pieces where maybe it's, the use has changed. And that goes in, in, while we've had some greenfield, a lot of it is, is really in areas that are really planned for the higher density. Obviously, things like when it's attached housing, like multifamily or senior living, it needs to be where there's water sewer services. It typically is on the larger roadways and so forth. So some of that, a lot of these things kind of spill over into each other. And it's something that we can, you know, work towards, you know, working whether it's the, it's the planning commission in terms of site plan reviews, looking at, you know, tweaking any requirements and so forth, as well as, as the township board goes through and looks at things, you know, historically they've applied mechanisms like pilots, but also now have the ability to do these brownfield housing tips. So if there's any ways that we can help to assist the township board as it considers those types of projects as well. So there's a, I think there's kind of like little pieces that we can do here and there. There's, there's only so much that we can do in terms of beyond some of these tweaks and, and adjustments. There's been a lot of changes to that zoning ordinance in terms of what's been, in what's permitted in terms of housing. We've changed some of the dimensional requirements. Certainly there are things opened up with, whether it's the PUD or the PURD, which allows for great flexibility. So I, I think it's, it's something we'll just continuously work on.
One other maybe positive value in looking at the mixed-use housing is, seems like in the past, maybe a little more distant past, when we saw that the Cherryland Center was in, in pretty bad shape. It's obviously done fairly well of, of late. But I think once upon a time when we're trying to look at what might be, we were hoping there might be some housing component in there. And there's been some nice changes in there, but housing isn't one of them yet. And so if that's one of the potential mixed-use areas we're talking about, maybe we could do something that would make it more attractive for there to be some housing. I don't know. I have no idea how this would work in.
I think you make a good point. I mean, if, from the standpoint of that entire corridor, I don't think of it as a corridor that has a lot of housing directly on it, maybe set back from it, but an opportunity to promote housing and promote walkability along that corridor and make it more of a, you know, make it more of a community and a place to live and go to restaurants, get your groceries. That corridor, look at it, might actually check a lot of the boxes on, on our matrix here.
And we are getting those, we're, we're having those discussions with, you know, potential developers looking at places to insert housing in places we may have not thought of before. You know, we do allow commercial district housing developments. And so you can put housing in our commercial areas. It's, you know, it's finding good fits. It's also just finding available land for a lot of people. I don't think there's anything that's going to be, you know, you know, a silver bullet out there. It's going to be all these different factors kind of taking into place, happening. We do have some large-scale developments that are, are, are under construction right now. But in terms of anything new, that it's, it's kind of been, you know, looked at when we, you know, assess when people are meeting with potential developers and say, you know, does this work? In some cases, it looks like it does. In some cases, there are challenges. And it's, and it's not always zoning. It's usually other factors. It can be things like wetlands that we're running into. It can be other, the way parcels are configured. You know, land assembly is a, is a critical piece to trying to make some of these things work. Some, it's, it's the legacy of the, of the previous uses that may have been on the site that are a challenge or, or some of these other things. But
Construction costs is often a factor. I think one of the things we've seen with Cherryland was like, that was a big factor and just the fact that like it allows for a lot of different uses, but the form still is, it still looks like a mall. So I think things that still thrive with that form. It's been good to see more use there. But yeah, it's without any kind of redesign of some of it. I think it's been difficult to kind of move beyond that point to the next iteration. But.
Any other thoughts? Well, are we looking to have staff then go ahead and at least start to put some things in our agenda for these meetings in the coming months that starts to move some of these suggestions forward? Everybody's in agreement with that? All right. Well, very good. Unless there's any other comments, we'll move on to our next agenda item. Public comment. Sir?
I do have some thoughts about the idea of corridor planning.
Oh, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but if you would say your name and your address, appreciate it.
Hayden Northrup, 889 Meadow Drive.
Thank you.
And based on the, the way that the boardman crossing there is, I think in a funnel, traffic through that, that street specifically with pretty high pressure, no matter what is done there. I think an effective corridor strategy plan would be more about the streets that funnel off of South Airport, such as there's not much connectivity to King's Court. And it can be difficult because where our most developed commercial corridors begin is kind of where Traverse City's suburbs and least developed area. But getting some of that behind, like you were talking about the strip mall or other parts of that corridor could be useful.
Thank you. Alright and with that we will move on to other business of which we have none so following that item 10 items for our next agenda but before we go there I was looking at my calendar and I will be absent from our second meeting in May John will you be available?
I believe so.
It's May 28.
On plan and on it.
Very good. Items for our next agenda May 14.
Yep so we have the public hearing for the rezoning that was introduced in the last meeting findings effect of Gautier site special use permit application for multifamily development a couple of new items an introduction for a major amendment with the Oak Hollow planning development this is the one that's along the east side of Boardman Lake kind of behind and I think actually includes the Value City but there's a piece that was long ago planned for office but it was never built so there's a new proposal for something there so it'd be an amendment to that PUD and then it's like oh go ahead.
It would be for housing they're looking to do build two apartment buildings for a total of 24 units or they potentially could be condos they're fairly larger units.
Would there be would they demolish that current building there?
No there's this is a vacant parcel it's roughly about three acres it's if you want to zoom in.
Yeah let's find it here.
It's a hilly site it's right at the end there's that Oak Hollow Court which is a pri excuse me a public street off of park kind of dead ends there and that's the parcel right there.
Oh wow.
It was intended to be two office buildings built that when the Lake Point PUD was developed in the 1980s that's what that was and they were never built so that's so there's it's significantly treat obviously it has impact on the Tart Trail there so the applicant is meeting with Tart Trails next week but this will be an introduction this is a major amendment because it's in the PUD plan is for office buildings and they're proposing apartment buildings or attached housing whether they're rentals or.
Multifamily housing.
Yeah multifamily.
Yeah and then an application for Hittops at a different location within Cherryland Center this would be as in part of the Yonkers Building but application materials and a site plan to take a look at.
Alright very good sounds like we have a full agenda for our next meeting May 14. If there is nothing else then.
Make a motion Ray Jerk.
Thank you Bob.